Are you ready in the back? All right, I'll go ahead and call this meeting to order. First item up on our agenda is to approve our agenda.
So move.
We have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
Motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed. Motion carries. Moving on to our consent agenda. I'll entertain a motion to approve our consent agenda as presented.
Motion to approve.
Motion. Motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed. Motion carries. Moving on to our financial report with Mr. Ray.
Everybody in their board packet should have the December financial statements. I'll draw your attention to the school nutrition program. You can see the revenues, budgeted revenues, payments from children, payments from adults, where we've already surpassed our budgeted revenue. So there'll be a budget amendment to address that. But the USDA reimbursement revenues for lunch and breakfast, that'll probably come in under budget. So we're just kind of changing the revenue line on where the revenue's going to come. I think overall, we're gonna, the number of meals that we serve for the school nutrition program, we're going to shrink this year compared to last year. For obvious reasons. Last year it was 100% free for everyone, and that has changed this year. So the participation will shrink. I don't think our margins are going to change, profits, the revenue that we can make and put back into the program is going to change much. Just total revenue is going to go down, and then total expenses will go down as well. I'm not concerned about it. I just wanted to, at this point, I know the revenues aren't going to be what we originally budgeted, so we'll change it. Any questions on that? And GP fund, everything's kind of in line. There'll be a few budget amendments next month to move things around to reflect the programming that we're actually going through, but nothing major. Federal projects, again, is a reimbursement grant. The expenditures we apply for reimbursement, we get reimbursement. Kind of boring, but the Sloan study wins the race with federal projects. Any questions on that?
Any questions for Mr. Ray regarding our December financial report? Hearing none, I'll entertain a motion to approve our December financial report as presented. We have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
Motion and a second. Any further questions or comments for Mr. Ray? Hearing none. Kim, could we have a roll call vote, please?
Kimberly Meredith.
Yes.
Lori Wilson.
Yes.
Tim Bible.
Yes.
Merle Price.
Yes.
Joey Smith.
Yes.
Curtis Isbell.
Yes.
Motion carries. Moving on to budget amendment number three.
Budget amendment number three is also on your board packet. Small budget amendment in general purpose school fund. Last year, we had a similar budget amendment. And what this is, is there's a federal grant that says, "We want you to spend X amount of dollars," in this case, $7,900, "on a certain student population addressing a certain need." The federal grant says this. "And in order to do that, we want you to take these monies and put it in the GP fund and then spend it." So that's what we're doing. That's a kind of a long way to get there, but that's what they want us to do. And then you'll see the opposite of that general entry in the federal projects. The IDA ARP grant. We had it last year for $17,000. It was CCIS. It relates to speech therapy. Kelly and Suzanne can talk a little bit more about that if they want to, but it's, we satisfied the requirements last year. We're doing it this year for this amount of money, and we'll move on. I'm not concerned about it. It's just kind of an awkward way to do things. Federal projects, again, they're reimbursement grants. We have one new grant is 896, Access for All Learning Network, pre-grad grant. Generally, it's approved over multiple years, and it's going to address materials and supplies and some equipment. And the detail for that is in the budget amendment detail. And the cafeteria fund, as I related with the financial statements, just adjusting the revenues to where I anticipate them to fall, and also the largest expenditure, which is contracted services with AirMark. If I, if we're experiencing a decrease in revenue, we're going to experience a decrease in expense. It's a direct relationship, so that's all for cafeteria fund. Any questions?
Any questions for Mr. Ray regarding budget amendment number three? Hearing none, I'll entertain a motion to approve budget amendment number three as presented.
I'd like to make that motion.
We have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
Motion and a second. Any further questions or comments for Mr. Ray? Hearing none. Kim, could we have a roll call vote, please? With my apologies.
Kimberly Meredith.
Yes.
Lori Wilson.
Yes.
Tim Bible.
Yes.
Merle Price.
Yes.
Joey Smith.
Yes.
Curtis Isbell.
Yes.
Motion carries, and my apologies, I forgot to turn my phone off before I got here. Moving on.
Twenty dollars.
Do you want?
Twenty dollar fine, right?
It probably is. I'll pay it. All right, moving on, we'll go on to our internal school funds audit.
Everybody should, everybody has access to the audit report for the internal school funds. If you have any questions about that audit, the findings, the financial statements, just feel free to contact me. We had a clean audit, no departures from what the state tells us to do. There were a few written findings. I've discussed those with Kelly. Some of them are recurring, the way we do things. And some of them we had to address, and which we have. And then the Board of Education audit, again, we're wrapped up in to this.
Not yet. They have to approve internals. Internal first.
Sorry. Trying to be efficient.
All right. Any further questions or comments regarding our internal school audit? Hearing none, I'll entertain a motion to approve our internal school audit. We have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
Motion and a second. Any further questions? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed. Motion carries. Moving on to our Board of Education audit.
Board of Education audit is wrapped into the city financial statements. We used to get a separate audit report from Brown, Jake, and McDaniel. Now that we're a p union company, the same firm that audits the city, we don't get a separate audit report. But our audit for our, for each of our funds, GP, general purpose, federal projects, and school nutrition is in there. There were no written findings. Everything's clean. And I don't think there's anything extraordinary to point out in there. If you have any questions about any of those reports, feel free to ask me.
I do want to take that time, as we're talking about our audits, just to publicly thank the City of Clinton. Several years ago, they took over our, the Board of Education audit for us, which about what, it's got $20,000?
Three or four years ago, it was $25,000. So it'll probably be $30,000 now.
So, and then they also pay for half of our internal school fund audit, which saves us almost $4,000 more dollars. And so that is just reoccurring contributions that the City of Clinton gives us to where we can spend our money on children instead of audits. So we want to thank them for continuing to support us in that manner.
Any further questions or comments for Mr. Ray? And do we have a motion and a second on the floor?
Not yet.
I don't think you did.
I'll entertain a motion to approve our education audit. We have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
Motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed. Motion carries. Moving on to new business requiring action by the board. This is our safe return to in-person instruction.
Yes, so part of our SRR3, as you know, that's the last pot of SRR money we got. We were required every six months. There were several addendums that we had to do in addition to the 3.0 grant. Two of them was our safe return to in-person instruction, which has always been very odd, because we have always been in school. But it's just kind of the precautions that we are taking. And then the SRR 3.0 public plan is just, and just providing transparency to the public of how we are spending those federal funds. So we are required through 2024 to update those two documents every six months, get board approval, and then place those on our website in English and one other language, which we choose Spanish in Clinton City schools. So really, with the safe return to person, in-person instruction, that's pretty much the same document that we had six months ago, because we're continuing to do the same thing. And then Lori Collins updated the SRR 3.0 public plan just to adjust our expenditures so far with all of our SRR funds.
So you don't have to change them if they're current?
Correct. We just have to look at them and update, you know, anything, if we've changed anything.
That's great.
Okay. Any further questions regarding our safe return to in-person instruction? All right, hearing none, I'll entertain a motion to apply the addendum as presented. Do we have a motion? Do we have a second? Motion and a second. Any further questions or comments? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed. Motion carries. Moving on to the SRR 3.0 public plan, the federal leave spending addendum. I'll entertain a motion to approve as presented. Do we have a motion? Do we have a second?
Second.
Motion and a second. Any further questions or comments? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed. Motion carries. Moving on to reports and information, reports from principals.
All right, we've got two of our principals with us today. One principal is out, out for a couple of weeks dealing with a personal issue, but we'll start. Monica, since you are front, we'll call you up to discuss the great things at North Clinton Elementary. And it looks like we did not do a good job of preparing our podium. If you can just.
I'll talk loud.
Well, how hard is it just to turn around when you have access to the microphone? Is it? Yeah, you can just rotate it. I'm sorry. I should have prepared that before the meeting. Lori and Jamie Jordan have skills.
I feel like I haven't had a school board report in a thousand years, but it's just been a few months since I've been able to report to you all. So I feel like I don't have as much to report as I should, just because I don't remember quite what I've said last. We have had, we've been working this year at North Clinton on our PLCs. We had originally focused our trajectory towards student ownership on success criteria in the classroom and working on ways for students to be able to know and be able to speak to what they do and do not know and understand, and what they do, what they have more questions about. So we are going to, at this point, we've kind of done that since probably October, so we're going to be moving toward, with the district, toward deconstructing the standards for teachers and students to really understand the very specifics of those standards. We are going to, we, I did want to report about our winter benchmark. We know that our 50% at wintertime is what we would expect for half a year, for students to grow 50% of a year. And for ELA, our students did grow 106%. And in math, they grew 78%. So not, lots of nice growth at North Clinton this year. We also had a traction visit with Capturing Kids' Hearts. We had all done some training as a district with this program. And so we had a representative from Capturing Kids' Hearts that came and talked to the principals. After which, North Clinton and their Process Champions, which is basically the group that is kind of helping to move forward and plan our path to work toward ours, with, work toward positive behavior with our students and positive relationships with our students and staff. So we have now, all of our contracts are posted throughout the building, and teachers and students have, or teachers and staff are going to be at every transition along the day, reminding each other of our social contracts, our agreements with each other on what we expect from one another. If we do not live up to those expectations, what the, what, what kinds of questions will be asked of them, and then if they continue, what kind of consequences they will be. And it's, we've been doing this less than two weeks, and we have already seen some major differences in our students. Our building is nice and calm, for the most part, at North Clinton. So it's good, good to be at North Clinton this year. Thank you.
Thank you, Monica. I was able to sit in on one of Monica's staff meetings a couple of weeks ago, and it was just amazing, the, the things that she's implementing with Capturing Kids' Hearts and how the kids at North Clinton are responding to it. But the Process Champions, the ones, the teachers who are kind of leading the charge of Capturing Kids' Hearts through the school, were leading the staff meeting, and they were actually doing things with the staff in the meeting that they could then take back into their classroom. And Monica was modeling strategies for teachers, and it was just a, it was a beautiful thing, and it is truly making a difference in the culture of her building. All right, Ms. Bone Steel, come on up.
So we also had a visit from our strategist from Capturing Kids' Hearts, and I really can't say enough about this training and this program that we've implemented and kind of how it has changed the culture of our school with our students and our teachers. But she spent a lot of time just visiting the classrooms, getting to know all about South Clinton. And her main request was she wanted to pop into classrooms when they were doing something called Good Things. So every day, the kids get to share one good thing with their classmates. And that was really sweet, to be able to go around to all the rooms with her and listen to the good things that the kids were sharing. So she also talked about some ways that our Capturing Kids' Hearts committee could recognize and celebrate staff, because I told her I wanted to do something to keep the momentum going, because right now, everybody's excited about it. But we want to keep that excitement and kind of have people keep being excited and keep leading the charge. So she gave us some great ideas about celebrating our teachers. So I'm implementing a new incentive for teachers called Bone Steel Bucks, and I should have brought you all one of them.
Did you bring them a Bone Steel Buck?
I should have brought everybody a Bone Steel Buck.
They're fabulous.
But basically, it's just a fun thing. It's a dollar bill, and it has my picture on it, and it says Bone Steel Buck on it. And when the teachers are doing something good, I just slip it to them, or I slip it in their mailbox, and then they can buy all kinds of fun things, like snacks and supplies and stickers and coupons to wear hoodies and all kinds of different things with it. So it's just another fun thing to do. And then we're going to start recognizing employee of the month instead of just recognizing a teacher of the month. We felt like all our employees need to be celebrated. So we're going to do an employee of the month, and we're going to get a big trophy. And they're going to get to hold that trophy in their classroom for the month. When it's their month, then we're going to do an affirmation board for them where the kids can put up positive affirmations. So we're excited about that as well. So on that note, our Capturing Kids' Hearts team has helped me lead staff meetings. So my part in staff meetings has gone from pretty much the whole thing to just a very small part of the staff meeting. And so the staff is having a time where they can share good things with each other. So that was really fun, because at our staff meeting this week, I had them share good things with each other. And then they would share aloud a good thing that somebody else had shared, so kind of celebrating each other. So it's just been really fun. On January 27th, our sixth graders, along with the Clinton Elementary School and North Clinton Elementary, went to a session on internet safety. And I think that our sixth graders took it really seriously, and that's a big deal for sixth graders to take anything seriously. So I think it was a really good session, and I think it was really worthwhile, the time that they spent over there. We are doing a fundraiser this month called Show Your Love for SCES, and it's the calendar fundraiser where people can sponsor a day. So if they sponsor the 15th, they'll donate $15 to the school. So we're theming it for Valentine's Day, because it's in the month of February. So we're hoping to raise some money to go toward classroom supplies and teacher wish lists. And our Read Day is coming up on March 3rd. And I am always looking for volunteers to come in and read on Read Day in person. So if anybody would like to come read to our students on that day, we would love to have you. Just let me know, and we'll get you scheduled in somewhere. And there's plenty of slots to fill, so we're excited about that. And I want to say congratulations to Erin Call, your fifth grade teacher, who is our South Clinton Elementary Teacher of the Year.
Leanne, before you sit down, back up. I need to brag on what she has done for the culture of South Clinton Elementary School. And Jamie, you can attest to this, but what is her current chronically absenteeism rate?
Well, she has no one even showing up on my list right now.
Zero. Zero kids at South Clinton Elementary School right now are showing up on chronically absent. And chronically absenteeism is they miss 17 days or more. Is that correct? 17 more days of school. And so you have to make school a happy place to come for kids to want to come. And I think the things that she is doing with developing relationships, connections, and just making it a positive learning place that supports kids is really paying off for there to be 240 kids in that building, and not one of them is chronically absent. It's simply amazing, so. She did win something herself. Ms. Leanne Bone Steel is our Principal of the Year for Clinton City Schools. And Monica, do you want to tell who your teacher was?
And I had it on my list and just skipped right over it. Jill Smithson is our Teacher of the Year this year. She is our current fourth grade teacher.
Who a week ago was our sixth grade teacher. Thus it shows, one of the reasons she is our Teacher of the Year. She's amazing. And then Jenna is not here to give the Clinton Elementary report, but at Clinton Elementary, Jamie Terry, who is a kindergarten teacher, was the Teacher of the Year. And then we gave Officer Mavill, the SRO, Award of the Year. The things that he does is simply amazing. And he also handles all of our truancy and works very closely with all the principals on truancy issues. And so he definitely was well deserved to receive that award. And that concludes our principal reports.
All right. Other items for information, March 9th is our next school board meeting. It will be here. And our 2022 TSBA Legislative and Legal Institute is February the 16th and 17th in Franklin, for those of you that will be attending. That concludes reports and information. We'll remove, move on to our director's report.
So a couple of other Clinton City Schools updates. We are closely, I guess you have heard that Anderson County Schools closed for sickness for Monday, Friday and Monday. Been in close conversation with Dr. Parrott today regarding that. We are closely watching our numbers for student sickness, and it just, it pops and it pops in pockets. And so Anderson County, there are some pockets that truly are of need. As of this moment, we are not seeing those pockets in Clinton City Schools. That could change tomorrow. It could change on Monday. But for today, our attendance was 91.4%. And as you see, we had across the district, a total of six staff members that were out. That did include, all of those weren't sick, but some of those were appointments. Some of those were recovery from surgeries. So we are just not seeing the hot pocket in Clinton City Schools. As I said to the staff members, you know, when you're making a decision about three schools in a small geographic area, you have to make those decisions differently than you do for the wide area that Anderson County Schools has to make with 18 schools. But we did clarify, and I want to clarify for you, just in case you were asked. Typically, we do not make it to this point in February with not having at least one inclement weather day or a sick day. We have been very blessed this year, which honestly, with as much school as kids have missed for COVID, I want to, I want to wrap up every single second that we can have with them. But a little bit of the history, if you are asked by someone about the way that we do our stockpile days, is historically, it's always been a 200-day teacher contract, and teachers have always worked from 7:30 to 3:15 every day. But when we started years ago, the stockpile days, the stockpile days do not change the teacher's contract in any way other than the fact that they have kids 30 minutes more during their existing contract. So by adding stockpile days, we're not adding any length to the teacher's day. We're not adding any length to the teacher's contract. But we are adding kids in the building for 30 minutes more a day. And that's how we get our stockpile days. And so throughout the year, going that 30 minutes extra a day, that gets us 13 days. And so we apply to the Department of Education every year for three of those days to be used as professional development days. So we add those to our collaborative day mix, which leaves us with 10 inclement weather days. So it's kind of like an insurance policy. So some years, we use it, some years, we don't. But if we do take a day, we don't ever, technically, I guess we're saying that the teacher didn't work a 200-day contract, but we're definitely not going to ask a teacher to make that day up. But likewise, because that is included in the teacher contract, if we don't use it, it's kind of like insurance. We just, we just, we, we just enjoy the time that we've had with kids, but we can't really gift that back, because you're within your contractual agreement. So we'll just continue to watch. This may be a year. We do have the right, though, in the spring, like if we haven't used these inclement weather days, I can make a request to the state to let me add another professional learning day in the spring and use one of my inclement weather days, which is probably with math adoption and some other things that we have going on. I foresee that that will be something that I will do, just to give us a little bit more time to prepare if we don't use those days for other things. So more to come on that. But if you happen to get asked about that, we just usually don't have to answer the number of questions that we're getting this year, because we usually have used some by this time. So we still have a few more weeks, though. We're still holding out for at least one snow for the kids. And we did have one of the former board member's granddaughter did go up to David Queener, and he wanted to know that if Kelly Johnson was aware that Clinton was inside Anderson County, and that if I was not aware of that, if he would please let me know that Clinton is inside Anderson County, therefore, if Anderson County is closed, Clinton City should be closed as well. So anyway, fun times. We were, a lot of Clinton City Schools was highlighted at the National Teacher Shortage Summit in New Orleans last month due to our involvement with the Grow Your Own programs. And that is just, as I've explained to you before, we were using some of our teaching assistants, and the state is actually paying for them to go get certified to become a teacher in an effort to address the massive shortage that we are experiencing across the nation. So that was, that was fun to be in a room with, you know, districts all across the nation, and us getting to talk about Clinton City Schools. Our work within IET is continuing this semester. They've been with us quite a bit through our Math Implementation Grant. This grant this year is focused on leaders, and so we are working diligently with them to learn the Tennessee Instructional Practice Guide that's leading our work in making sure that we choose a highly effective math textbook, but also looking at us as we implement that new textbook, some great instructional practices that we can do. The conversations that have occurred between our leadership team and what our leadership team, the conversations looked like two years ago and what they look like now is so remarkably different. It is simply mind-boggling and amazing, the collaborative work that has transformed working with NIET. We will be traveling to, where are we going, Lori?
Indianapolis.
Indianapolis in March. They have actually asked the Clinton City Schools leadership team to come to their national conference to do a bubble session where we will do our leadership team meeting in front of people so that they can see the strategies that we are using collaborating with each other. So that's a huge honor that we were asked to do that. So we are hearing that the TESA rules are going to be finalized on February the 15th. TDOE does estimate that we should have our first round of estimates, money estimates, by the end of this month. Some aspects of those TESA rules are not going to be, the state board doesn't really approve it. They give it either a thumbs up or thumbs down, or a neutral kind of feeling. Some of those aren't even going to be heard by the state board until March, but we are getting no indication that that would keep them from being finalized. So hopefully, we'll have some numbers of what the new funding formula does for Clinton City Schools soon. And then if you listen to Governor Lee's State of the State, he is recommending that the General Assembly approve summer school funding. If you remember, this year, it was just going to be rising fourth through seventh for Clinton City. But it is on the table to approve funding for our kindergarten base camp through ninth grade, which would be seventh grade, rising seventh for us. It did pass out a subcommittee this week, so we strongly feel that it will pass, and so we will begin preparations of doing summer school for our rising kindergartners through our rising seventh graders at North Clinton this year. Lori and Lauren King will oversee that process for our district. There are multiple third grade retention bills. I can't remember if there are 16, 18, and then somebody quoted 21 today. So there's just a lot of them, looking at revising that. They all have their own little twists and turns and tweaks to it, but mainly, the big theme is putting that back into the district's hands for us to be able to make the call in conjunction with the parent and the teacher of what should, should happen. That's going to be met with some resistance by some. Senator Lundberg, am I saying his name right, Rick Meredith? He is very, very much against any revision whatsoever. He feels strongly that it should remain, so we're going to get some pushback on both ways. But I think we'll see some sort of tweak that happens. The Clinton Rotary Daddy Daughter Dance is this Saturday. Tickets are still available. Tickets are still available in each of the Clinton elementary, each of the three elementary schools' front office, through dismissal tomorrow, and then we'll be turning in all the money and tickets to the Rotary Club. But we certainly want to support this event, but the Rotary Club is giving us thirty thousand dollars for our North Clinton Playground. So we're, their partnership is greatly appreciated. Scott and I, Scott J. and I met with Central Tech yesterday to discuss expanding the FOB access. When you all came to Central Office, you saw the FOB access that we put at Central Office, and it has really been received very well, and it has worked very well with no glitches, and we've really, really seen success with that. So we want to look to expanding that out into the three schools. That is probably going to be a phase-in process over a period of time, so we're going to hopefully do the first phase this spring, and then Phase Two over the summer or in the fall. But we've worked with principals to get their top two doors at each school, and then we'll add two more doors with Phase Two, and then Phase Three, we can finish up anything else that we need to. So that is underway. And then Scott Ray and I met with the architect and contractor to continue the discussion about CES playground renovations. And we had some good headway, they're working out some good stuff. But we are going to meet a playground expert on March the twentieth, who is going to be really aware of some of the rules and regulations, and some of the, some of the plans that we have. And then that playground person can give the contractor a little bit better information so that we can work on some rough estimates to bring back to you. So that is underway as well. And then just wanted to let you know that I'm currently meeting with all staff members in small groups, just trying to glean information. As I told Clinton Elementary staff, that running a school, running a classroom, doing anything in education is kind of like a whack-a-mole game. You know, you whack, you whack the mole that is, that's popping up and is the hardest, and then you put your attention towards this way, and then other things rise up to the surface that you may or may not know about. And so my question to them is, what are we, what mole are we whacking in the right direction, and what are we allowing, what are we currently not, you know, knocking down that we should? So I got some good information there, and we'll continue to do those at North Clinton and South Clinton in the upcoming weeks. And then we are currently making kindergarten registration appointments. So if you know of any sweet little babies that are going to be five soon, make sure they call Kim Martin in Central Office and make an appointment, so that we can take care of them and get them into Clinton City Schools. So that concludes my report. Any questions for me?
All right. Any further questions or comments?
Kelly, what percentage do you look at? Like, attendance today was ninety-one point four percent.
Yes. Eighty.
Oh, okay.
We kind of use eighty as our threshold. If we're, if we're inching towards eighty, we're watching super closely. If we get around eighty, we usually close. And that, that student, and we could close if we can't manage, you know, coverage of classrooms as well. I would not close if we're pulling teaching assistants to cover classrooms. As long as we can cover a classroom, I think we owe it to stay open. But if we reach the point that we were having to double up classes, or something of that nature, we might close for that reason as well. I would much rather close for snow.
Me, too.
I don't want people to be sick.
All right. Any further questions or comments? All right, I'll declare this meeting adjourned.